Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for November 19th, 2020. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss any and all business via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 40A of Massachusetts General Laws and Governor Baker's emergency order dated March 12th, 2020. In accordance with Baker, Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. This meeting is being televised live by PBD Access Television. It is also being accessed via the Zoom platform. It is also being recorded by the city councilor's stenographer. If you please rise for a moment of silence. And now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the approval of the record, Mr. President?
There is no record at this time, so we will move right on to hearings, which there are none, so reports of committee, first one being Legal Affairs Committee, Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had one item on the agenda. We had all the members of the committee at this, at our meeting, and the item was Group One Automotive Incorporated, Zero Andover Street slash Richardson Road regarding a special permit eight-two-one-seven, eight-two-zero-one-seven, conveyance to the City of Peabody. This was a procedural matter, following up on a condition that was part of a special permit from 2017. The item was unanimously approved by the subcommittee, and I can make the motion of to approve it here. It's going to be motion to approve a conveyance to the City of Peabody from Group One Automotive Incorporated for frontage at Richardson Road and Zero Andover Street regarding a special permit eight dash two-zero-one-seven, so moved.
On the motion, Councilor Charas.
Thank you. Just want to make just a quick comment on the motion. This is, as most of you may remember, several years ago, when this was being developed into a, a storage parking lot for the Audi dealership. It was brokerage to have this parcel of land donated to the city and made into a memorial park for Alex Vitell, a young man who was killed in a car accident, who just lived right up the street. If you go by, I'm sure, I know most of you have, and it's a beautiful park. It's kind of came to fruit exactly what I envisioned and the neighbors envisioned, to incorporate plants and flowers, bushes, from where he helped plant in neighbors' yards. And those neighbors dug them up and replanted them into this memorial park. A lot of help from the garden club in Peabody and the neighbors again. Again, I just really impressed with everyone stepping up, and the city also, the city workers helping out, and then other people making donations for mulch and stone and seed and things of that nature. So this council should be proud that this neighborhood has taken on this memorial park, and it would always be a memorial park in Alex's name. And I know that the family is very, very pleased. And that was all. I just wanted to give you an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Charas. Councilor Gould, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to commend Councilor Charas for his vision and hard work in that matter, right from the get-go. Councilor Charas, you were on top of it, and you knew what you wanted there, and you were persistent in negotiating with the auto group and the residents, and I'd like to commend you for it. Nice job.
Thank you.
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Seeing no further discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor Melville, anything further?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, reports of committee, is Public Service Committee, Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We conducted a meeting of Public Services Committee at the request of Councilor Sassla for two subject matters. First and foremost was the water project that we've all been affected by throughout the city and hopefully has good results. And secondly was snow removal. All councils were present for that meeting. Bob LaBosse, the Director of Public Services, was here to answer questions. With regard to the water project, the vast majority of the project is done, with the exception of the Winona Treatment Plant, which would hopefully be done by the end of the winter, early spring. With the current sections of the project being worked on, the last segments will be the repaving of trench work done by utility contractors to hopefully smooth out some of the routes, the main routes, i.e. Summit Street, Lowell Street, some areas near the Salt School. And the planned repaving for all streets affected by this will be in the early spring, and that money has already been funded. There were some, also some questions about water pressure throughout neighborhoods. That will be a slow process, as Mr. LaBosse said, in an effort not to burst current pipes by adding too much pressure to the system. So it is coming. It'll just be a slower process, roughly 30 days. Then we moved over to snow removal. The more important thing that I'd like to mention is that Mr. LaBosse did mention that there'll be a portal, i.e. telephone number for residents to call into. I believe he'll publish that on the website, the city website. We can try to get it out to you as soon as we have that number, so that residents can call in if their street is mists, needs salt, sand, or, or other activity. But the city is ready, and also they are still looking for snow contractors. That information is also available on the city website currently, but Mr. LaBosse did mention that you could call the Public Services Department to inquire about openings for snow removal contracting. And that's, that's it for the report of committees. There were no motions filed.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Last report of committee was the Finance Committee, Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening. Present for the committee were Councilors Gould, O'Neill, Manning Martin, and Turco, and myself as chairperson. Also present were Councilors Welton, Mazzulis, Charas, Sassla, Melville, and Rozignol. There were two items on the agenda. The first item was a fiscal year 2021 financial update. The first motion that was made as a function of that topic was a motion to receive item seven B. So I'd make that and refer to this matter, so I'd make that motion now under suspension of the rules, Mr. President. So moved.
Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So that concluded that portion of the agenda. Then the second item on the agenda was a transfer of funds, cable fund expense in an amount of, in two amounts, $2,387.57 and $10,744.05. That was explained by Mr. Jengris, and subsequently there was a motion by Councilor Gould to approve the transfer requests from Receipts Reserve Cable Fund Account Number 270-000033017 in amount of $2,387.57, and Account Number 270-000033017 in amount of $10,744.05. To Cable Fund Expense Account Number 270-000053007 in amount of $2,387.57, and Account Number 270-000053007 in amount of $10,744.05. Mr. President, that motion passed unanimously at committee, and I now bring that to the full council for consideration. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor McGinn, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor Welton.
No further motions this evening. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and be safe.
Thank you, Councilor Welton. Councilor Sassla.
Thank you, Council President. No motions, orders, and resolutions, but I did want to share some information regarding cable TV. Recently, there was an article in the local paper that RCN is providing high definition for the local cable access TV stations, and I had received some phone calls for some residents inquiring about when they're going to be able to get RCN. I did reach out to Cable Commissioner Tom Pappas, and he gave me an update, and basically so the residents know, the city's about 50% wired from RCN. The expected completion date is supposed to be the summer of 2021. And he also explained to me that in some of the neighborhoods that have underground utilities, those will be done at the end because it's more work involved, where the neighborhoods that have the utilities above ground, those are the ones that they've wired up first and hooked up first. So I know everybody in Peabody wants competition, and some of the neighborhoods might be questioning why it's not done, but as I said, it looks like hopefully by the summer of 2021, everybody in the city should have a, an option, a choice, and I wanted to thank Chairman Pappas. He got back to me quickly, and it's good information. So thank you, and everyone else have a happy Thanksgiving as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sassla. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item nine. I'd like to make a motion to receive and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor Mazzulis, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So that concluded that portion of the agenda. Then the second item on the agenda was a transfer of funds, cable fund expense in an amount of, in two amounts, $2,387.57 and $10,744.05. That was explained by Mr. Jengris, and subsequently there was a motion by Councilor Gould to approve the transfer requests from Receipts Reserve Cable Fund Account Number 270-000033017 in amount of $2,387.57, and Account Number 270-000033017 in amount of $10,744.05. Mr. President, that motion passed unanimously at committee, and I now bring that to the full council for consideration. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor McGinn, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor Welton.
No further motions this evening. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and be safe.
Thank you, Councilor Welton. Councilor Sassla.
Thank you, Council President. No motions, orders, and resolutions, but I did want to share some information regarding cable TV. Recently, there was an article in the local paper that RCN is providing high definition for the local cable access TV stations, and I had received some phone calls for some residents inquiring about when they're going to be able to get RCN. I did reach out to Cable Commissioner Tom Pappas, and he gave me an update, and basically so the residents know, the city's about 50% wired from RCN. The expected completion date is supposed to be the summer of 2021, and he also explained to me that in some of the neighborhoods that have underground utilities, those will be done at the end because it's more work involved, where the neighborhoods that have the utilities above ground, those are the ones that they've wired up first and hooked up first. So I know everybody in Peabody wants competition, and some of the neighborhoods might be questioning why it's not done, but as I said, it looks like hopefully by the summer of 2021, everybody in the city should have a, an option, a choice, and I wanted to thank Chairman Pappas. He got back to me quickly, and it's good information. So thank you, and everyone else have a happy Thanksgiving as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sassla. Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item nine. I'd like to make a motion to receive and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor Mazzulis, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no motions, and I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and hope everybody stays healthy. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Mazzulis. Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, it's been a year since we lost our friend and colleague, Kyra Mertag. She passed away a year ago on the 29th of November, and in her memory, the Peabody Education Foundation has made her the only recipient this year of a legacy award for all her hard work, and setting the tone for Peabody's future school system. And I'd like to invite anybody that would like to join us, pardon me while I read this, but it'll be on PAT Facebook page, on Channel 99, and on, which, and Comcast, and the new cable station, and our, the group, Peabody Ed Foundation, is headed by Dave Gravell and a number of volunteers, and Mary Bellevance has championed this, and Mary will be sending out a press release and an email to, to the other staff and members of the Peabody community. So I just want to invite everyone on the 29th at five o'clock. It only lasts an hour, and it's broadcast live from the Higgins. It is, there is no in-person participation. There is a minimal amount of people, but it's, it can be zoomed, and it can be checked out on PAT. Thank you, Mr. President. That's my first motion. Excuse me, my first information. Any questions? I'm going to answer them.
Seeing no questions, Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President. I'd like to thank every, all my fellow councilors that gave some feedback about the housing production plan that is now been received by Mr. Bellevance, and he's working with the consultant, and we hope to have an update, updated plan that we can then review and vote on very shortly. And my third item is, Mr. President, can you please tell us what the December schedule is going to be?
I'm sorry, the December schedule?
Yes, please.
Tax classification will be December 8th, and our last meeting for the year will be December 10th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. No further motions.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Councilor Charas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one update. We, just past Monday, the City and School Ad-Hoc Committee met at the Higgins Library, and the attendance was, from the school committee was Amico, Otis, and Compteur from the city side, was myself, Welton, and Turco. Conversations included the redistricting, with the possibility of that coming up. They informed the city council members there that the mayor was setting up a committee and appointing people to that to look into redistricting. The other topic was the school buildings that was mentioned in the past possibly being for sale or would be for sale if they deemed them surplus. It was a light conversation about that, and more to come, but the members there, their feelings were that the one particular one in Kylie was, you know, needed a lot of conversation further to just figure out if that was going to be deemed surplus. We did have a conversation about numbers rising here in Peabody with schools, children that were going to need some more space, and with both of those, would need some more conversation. That was it on that. So moved. Doesn't need to have a vote, there's information. And the other piece of information is that I visited a business recently here, unfortunately not here in Peabody, but a neighboring town. The company's called Parcels, and I got, we have a connection here with Craig Welton, being part of the ARC program. And this store, I really let you folks know, you should check it out. Quite impressive. The merchandise in this, in the store, which is located in Liberty Tree Mall, is made and owned by different companies with people with disabilities. It's very, very impressive. As we all know, it goes to a very good cause, and I got to tell you, I am very proud that our own Craig is part of that organization, and what great work they do, and some of the work is right, from right down the street here on Foster Street. But again, my wife wants to go back without me, so she can spend more time there. Unfortunately, fortunately, I think that's going to make some great holiday gifts that you can, you can purchase, so please, I check it out. It's a worthy cause. I just want to give that shout out. And again, to everyone, happy Thanksgiving, to my family, and to my colleagues, and to the citizens in Peabody. Please stay safe and enjoy maybe a little extra drumsticks, since no one's going to have large parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Charas. Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item eight C, letter from Clerk Allison Danforth regarding her reappointment to city clerk for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2023. I know that my colleagues rightly gave accolades to you regarding the, at our last meeting, regarding the election, which you certainly deserve so much credit for that. But in addition, given COVID-19 took up our entire year 2020, and you had to deal with remote meetings, City Hall being shut down, yet you were in every day, as were your staff for the entire year 2020. And again, you had to deal with the presidential election with the record numbers, to include mail-in voting for the first time, so really, you really did phenomenal work, and a lot was put on you, and you never once complained, and you, or at least not in earshot of any of us. You didn't complain, and you, you know, you just went along day-to-day doing all the business that needs to be done, and I can't commend you further, so I am just proud to make a motion to approve your reappointment, again, for a term to expire December 31st, 2023, to city clerk and City of Peabody. We are very lucky to have you, and thank you for everything that you've done. So moved.
You heard the motion to receive and approve the appointment. On the motion, I would just like to add to Councilor Manning Martin's statements. As the council president, and anybody that's been council president knows, you work hand in hand with the city clerk's office with everything that you do, and this year has had its challenges, to say the least, but Allison, I think you've handled it with grace and class and professionalism, and that goes beyond, above and beyond anything expected, and I can't thank you enough for a great year and all the great work that you do. So thank you. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Absolutely, yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes, thank you.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Council Manning Martin.
Thank you very much, councilors.
Thank you. Councilor Manning Martin. Thank you. Councilor Turco.
No motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of rules, move to receive item eight B as in boy and set up a special permit hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor O'Neill, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to request PMLP to install a streetlight at the corner of Catherine Drive and Teresa Road. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor O'Neill, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sassla.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charas.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, lastly, I just wanted to thank Captain Richards and Sergeant Harkins of the Peabody Police Department, who met with me at the end of last week to address some of the residents' concerns specifically on Roosevelt Avenue and Madison Avenue with traffic and speeding, and they're working on the problem and trying to address it, so I just want to thank them personally. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor O'Neill. Councilor Melville.
No motions this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item seven A and refer to finance. So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor McGinn, seeing no discussion on the motion, roll You heard the motion by Councilor McGinn. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
The, the only thing I just wanted to say this evening is, and Councilor Gould alluded to earlier, the only two upcoming meetings on our docket is, December 8th will be tax classification. That's actually a Tuesday as opposed to Thursday, just because Mike Ingris needed a little extra time. Usually, it's the first Thursday of December, so it's actually going to be the first, second Tuesday of, of December. And then lastly, our last meeting for the year will be December 10th. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You heard the motion by Councilor McGinn. Roll call vote.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.